All right, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I we do. I see have a quorum, but please allow me to give. I know one of our board members are not feeling well. Okay, I just got. Mr. Berklin is having technical difficulties. Um, I'd feel more comfortable if we had. One more board member, but we are legally allowed to go ahead with. The four of us.
Ms. Stephenson is viewing as an attendee.
Shirley, we can't hear you.
I can hear her.
Oh, Jamie, I can't. Is it? Okay, hold on. Is it? Hold on. Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay, I need to hit. Okay. Oh, Mr. Berklin, hi. All right. Um, let's go ahead. I'd like to call to order the Rapid City Area Schools regular board meeting. Zoom edition. I'd like to thank everyone in advance for the flexibility of. Um, of zooming tonight. We had every intention to be in person. But that's what you get for living in South Dakota. And so the weather conditions I felt especially by the time we ended our meeting were. Um, was not conducive. So there was consensus to do by Zoom. So we will um make that work. Uh, just again, by procedure, because we are on Zoom, all votes that we take will be. Um, by roll call. All right, um, let's call the meeting to order. Um, Shirley, roll call, please.
Uh, Bobby, would you please add Christine as a panelist? I know you've tried. She's asking to try again. Troy.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Christine, she is here. Donna.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Walt. And Katie.
Here.
I'm here, Shirley.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we will forego. Uh, the pledge of allegiance and move on to item number three, which is approval of proposed agenda. Um, I think this is a good opportunity to um just communicate to to everyone, to the board and to. Um, to administration that the administration does have a very. Uh, well thought out procedure for getting items on the uh agenda. And um, and and so we want to use those procedures as best we uh we can to be as accurate as we can on the. Uh-oh, something. Okay, there's there's everyone. Um, so we can be as accurate as we can on the agenda. I know. That we have um emergencies that come up like tonight, as you will see, uh as we um. Uh, approve the agenda. But again, we want to do our best to um to be timely in in putting uh our agenda together. And uh, I I don't want um the board or the um or the administration to get comfortable with the fact that we are allowed. Uh, to make changes to the agenda because it is a proposed agenda at this time, and it will start. Uh, getting to the point that unless it's mission essential, that's my old Air Force terminology coming up. Unless it's a mission uh mission essential to the running of the district. Um, um, I I I think late items will be pushed to the next meeting. Okay, with all that being said, we do have some amendments to our current agenda. We will delete item seven. Student representative reports. Um, they will not report tonight. We will delete item eleven, which is a policy that will go. Um, back to uh, it will be presented later, but we'll go back to go through the correct um channels. And then we had an addition. An executive session, so we will add to item fifteen. SDCL one dash two five dash two point four. I don't know if I saw um Kelsey and I I that she told me that that. Um, that executive session um item allows us to talk about um negotiations and and the finances that. Uh, that go with that. So um Shirley, you want to uh annotate that Walt is with us.
Thank you.
All right, any board member have any other um items on the agenda that they would like um deleted or added? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as edited.
A motion.
Second. Okay, we have a a a. Uh, motion and a second. Uh, Shirley, roll call.
May I ask who made the uh first motion?
Katie.
Thank you, and Walt second.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. But Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, excuse me, Katie.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, item four, sharing the success, and we have. Recognition to ourselves. Who's gonna tell us how great we are?
I am.
All right, wonderful.
Uh, good evening, board, and for our sharing the success, uh, it is. Uh, celebrating School Board Recognition Week, which is February seventeen to twenty one. Uh, so I just want to read a brief couple of comments. Um, so the Rapid City Area Schools proudly recognize and celebrate. School Board Recognition Week from February seventeen to twenty one. This week provides an opportunity to express our gratitude to the dedicated individuals. Who serve on our school board, shaping the future of education in our district. Their leadership, vision, and commitment ensure that every student receives a high quality education in a supportive and forward thinking environment. Our school board members play a vital role in setting the district's vision and goals through the strategic plan. They establish policies that guide our schools, and they oversee financial stewardship to ensure sustainable growth and success. They continually monitor the district's progress while prioritizing the best interests of our students, staff, and community. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to our board members for their tireless service, their advocacy, and their leadership. Their efforts make a profound impact on the success of our schools, and we are grateful for their dedication to building a brighter future for all students. So I hope anybody listening uh can join us in saying uh thank you all for uh the continual work that you do. And just want to encourage the community to uh give you some recognition. Because it is a challenging role, but a unbelievably valuable role. Uh, so we appreciate you all uh in doing that because. Uh, that is uh one of the cornerstones of the success of the district. So uh, thank you, and if we were in person, we might have a little bit more, but. Uh, wanted to share that uh for you and and uh bring that forward tonight.
Do you mean more in the sense of like gift certificates, or what do you what do you mean more?
Um, yeah, probably something like that.
Okay, well, I thank you so very much for your your kind words, and I would just like to. Thank every board member for your tireless work. It's it's unfortunate that we cannot um communicate to the community well enough. The amount of time, personal time and effort and and uh that it takes to be a board member. Um, it is, it is not just the the times that you see us at the board member. I spoke to a board member today. They spent. Three hours on an agenda item and another three hours on another agenda item. And so I just want to appreciate all of you for your dedication, the time that you spend away from your families. To dedicate our community, and I I do know uh each of you individually, and I know that you have. Uh, you're doing it because you have a passion uh for the students in the in the district. You have a passion for education, and you have a passion for the community to do the best for for our kids. So I would like to personally. Also thank each board member for your tireless work.
And and can I say one more thing? Uh, Bishop Carr, uh, I think it's important to to know that uh everybody serves uh three year term and. Uh, sometimes more, and that's that's a long uh commitment, and uh again, just very, very important. So. Wanted to point out the longevity of of the role that you all uh go through.
All right, thank you. Board members, do you have any other comments? All right, seeing none. Um, surely I don't know how we would have gotten open forums, but.
If they want to raise their hand, we could do, but do it that way. We can promote them.
Okay, so all those of you who are listening in currently on the Zoom, if you would like. Uh, to speak at open forum, please raise your hand. Surely we'll um invite you into the. To this section of the uh of the board meeting so that you can make your comments. All right. Okay, you maybe another thirty seconds here. Chime in. Um, if you don't know, if you've never been on Zoom before, um, at the bottom of your screen, there's a raise hand. Um, button, and you can just press that button, and it will raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will uh move on from open forum, and so we do not have. Uh, board response to open forum, and so at this time, we have uh acting superintendent report, uh Dr. Strasser.
All right, uh, good evening again, board. Uh, just a couple of quick things tonight. Uh, first of all. Uh, as as you all are aware, uh, it is extremely cold outside, and um that's presenting. Some very uh unique challenges for our district. Uh, we have uh concerns uh coming into uh today, but also into tomorrow regarding. Uh, our buses operating um regarding, of course, student safety. Uh, we have a a. Large number of students uh who do walk to school, uh and and we have buildings that are cha- having challenges functioning. Excuse me, functioning appropriately um between uh what they call free stat issues with our UN events. Uh, to heat pump units and and other technical things that uh I don't know much about. Uh, but uh we we met as as a team this afternoon. We talked through where we are as a district in terms of being able to provide appropriate education. Uh, in the environment that that we want for our kids, and uh with that, we made a decision. Um, to be out of school tomorrow. Um, not. Uh, obviously ideal, but we we had to make some decisions and uh and get that communication out. Um, so. Obviously, we went through today, uh but continuing tomorrow, knowing that the temps are are worse overnight tonight. And and the challenges uh of getting our buildings where they needed to be and uh. Where our transportation needed to be uh to provide the service we want uh was just. Very challenging. So uh, that's where we landed as a team, uh, and that communication has gone out. I wanted to share just a a little bit on our substitutes, uh so I get uh monthly updates regarding our substitute teachers and substitute pairs in our district. And just wanted you to know that we have two hundred and eighty-five uh substitutes in our system. Uh, obviously, that doesn't mean everybody um is a sub, but. Or actually, you know, follows through on a consistent basis, uh but two hundred and eighty-five is is a good number for our district. Uh, just in January, we had thirty-five new applicants. So that was an encouraging number. And and our team works to onboard and continually uh seek and uh bring in new subs. Our fill rate for our subs, so just to give you a a picture of of what it's like. Uh, in our district when we have absences, our fill rate is eighty percent for our certified staff. And uh, obviously, we'd like to have that at a higher rate. Um. Yeah, and when I say eighty percent, that was for January. Uh, our year to date is eighty-two percent. So we're right, right in line. In in terms of filling positions. So uh classified absences. That fill rate is a little more challenging um because we have fewer. Fewer subs uh in our classified areas. Uh, so I thought those were, those were good numbers that uh would be uh valuable for you to be aware of. Uh, in terms of how we are trying to staff and continually support uh instruction and and the work in our buildings. And those are the two main things that I wanted to uh bring up tonight. Unless you have questions for me.
Mrs. Urban.
Um, Dr. Strasser, I just wanted to thank you for um making a decision this evening, and. I think um regarding the school closure tomorrow, I think our community really appreciates that, and I um. I don't know that the average person understands all of the complexities that go with making that decision. Um, it's really difficult. There's so much to consider. So um I appreciate all the work that you and the admin team did, and um. Hopefully, our buildings and buses will be up and running by Thursday, but you never know. So again, thank you. I know it's not um an easy decision.
Mrs. Clapham.
Um, one, I wholeheartedly echo and ditto um Ms. Urban, but also Dr. Strasser. I was just wondering for the benefit of the public. Um, and you know, really, most people will watch it later, but can you briefly explain? Um, because a lot of people have come up. Well, we should have an e-learning day, but I don't think there's awareness of the state requirements for that. So could you verbalize that just? For the public to get a little bit better understanding of that, because I know the seven of us know, and most of the people on the panel, but I don't think the general public does.
Yeah, i- in essence, we're allowed to utilize uh e-learning, remote learning. It's called various things. Um. And we can do that to continue education in in days like uh today, days like tomorrow. Uh, the concern with where we're at right now is we came off a three day weekend. Uh, we really lack the preparation. To carry out quality uh remote or e-learning, a- and so therefore uh. We chose not to uh try an e-learning day. Uh, but that option is there, and we we can do that. Uh, South Dakota allows it, and and our district has used it effectively in the past, and. That is something that will definitely be uh available and an option for us moving forward.
And is it correct, Dr. Strasser, just making sure I'm understanding that, isn't there a requirement for it to count for us to have contact with a certain percentage of students? Or to be able to verify that, or is that inaccurate?
Uh, I'm not sure on that requirement. I I'd have to look at that. I haven't seen anything that that says um. Uh, a requirement on how many kids. So I I don't think that's part of it, but I can I can check on that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? And I would also, uh, Dr. Strasser, like to thank you for, again, uh, what Mrs. Urban and Mrs. Clapham said, that it's a. It's a difficult decision, and it's a, it's where you where you earn your stripes as a superintendent uh making these decisions. All right, at this time, Chief Financial Operations Officer, Mr. Corey Sassy.
Going to figure this out, ladies and gentlemen. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, thank you very much, President Carr. I wanted to take some time tonight. Uh, not ideal, not uh being in. Um, person, but um as we continue to get closer and closer to um negotiations and and continue to discuss. Uh, working our way through the budget process years this year, uh, wanted to take some time to share with you all tonight, board. As we build outward and we start to look at compensation um and and what happens with that. I think it's really important that uh you all see some of the impact that that has on the budget, um and that uh whoever from the. Uh, community or inside the organization is watching has um an idea of that as well. Obviously, compensation uh has a huge impact on our budget, given that uh between eighty and and eighty-five percent of uh total expenditures in the system. Um, are typically geared towards um compensation and and benefits. So um it has a major impact. So I'm going to walk through. Um, scenarios looking at increasing compensation, and you'll see how that impacts the overall budget. Uh, again, we're going to focus uh primarily tonight, looking at the general fund. Uh, general fund is the major fund in terms of. Uh, compensation uh carries about eighty to ninety percent of of total employees. Um, in in terms of of compensation. Um, so what happens with the general fund again really dictates uh the overall financial health of the system. And of course, uh, has reverberating impacts on on uh um some of the other funds as well, primarily capital outlay. Um, in its need for uh or potential for a a flexibility transfer. So we're going to talk about some of those concepts tonight. Um, obviously, the the legislative uh situation has a huge impact on. Not only the financial system, but ultimately what ends up happening with compensation and and what direction the district goes with compensation. Um, there's, there's still lots of bills in play that have potential impacts on on the district. Um, some of the major threats are, of course, voucher ed savings um in any of the various property tax relief related bills. Um, SB fifty-five is what at this point I would call the normal state aid bill. Um, that's the bill that adjusts the various tax levies just from the the year to year adjustments, and then sets the target teacher salary increase. And in this bill in particular, it is set at one point two five percent uh per the governor's recommendation. Um, obviously, I I think they're about halfway through the legislative session at this point. It's really difficult to say what's going to happen. Um, a lot of different scenarios could play out. Uh, of course, bills gain momentum, lose momentum, get killed. Uh, uh, come back in different forms, but um at this point, um, a- after discussing with the finance committee where we're at and and where we're going. Um, we're going to proceed with the assumption that the target teacher salary will increase one point two five percent. This is very important, of course, as we move into negotiations and look at. Um, setting up our our scenarios for negotiations and and the remainder of the budget process. And there just becomes a point at which we we have to start moving forward with a number, and of course, if if that number changes um in a way that materially impacts. The situation, we'll come back and address that. But at this point, we're going to move forward under that scenario, and and that has a major impact, as you're going to see here in in just a moment. So you all have seen this. Uh, this is the uh general fund projection for fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, we've talked about this already. I'm not going to dive deeply into this. Uh, suffice a a couple of comments. Um, of course. The major area, as we carry that uh one point two five percent target teacher salary increase forward. Um, that we see uh a a major impact is is in this uh state. Uh, sources. That is primarily made up of state aid to the general fund. And uh with that one point two five percent target teacher salary increase. Again, because of the enrollment decline, we see a a steep year over year decrease in revenue around the state source of about two point two million. Uh, we do see again a local increase in terms of of local property tax driving that local effort, but. Ultimately, uh, as we can see here on the bottom line, um largely offset by that decrease in state aid. So from a year to year perspective. Uh, we're projecting moving from one oh five point one in the current fiscal year to one oh three point seven in fiscal year twenty-six. Which would be about a one point three nine million dollar decrease or about a one point two five percent revenue decrease in the general fund. Um, as we move into next year. So um, again, outside of the the state aid target teacher compensation. That scenario is pretty well set at this point. There's not a lot of movement. There's not a lot of things that are going to change. Um, of course, we we hope that. Education friendly folks in the legislature uh go to bat and and kill bills that are that could hurt the district and ultimately. Look at an increase to that target teacher compensation, but uh again, we just don't know where that's going to go, and and we have to proceed forward. So. Um, that is really the the one thing I would say i- i- at this point in this scenario that could materially change. The revenue aspect of of this picture, but. Um, as we move into looking at compensation scenarios, just keep in mind that that this is the revenue number that we're comparing back to in in all of these scenarios, the one oh three point seven. So. As we start to look at uh compensation, I I always first like to give the board an idea of what would happen if we just pick this budget up and and essentially carried it into the next year. Um, we increased where we where we had no choice but to increase, and then we compared that back to our revenue projection. So in this uh projection. We're showing a a zero percent compensation increase, so essentially no salary increase across the system. Just moving this budget forward, applying an inflationary increase of three percent in the categories that that we really have no control over in terms of. How inflation uh increases those expenses and comparing that number back to the revenue number. So again, you'll see the uh uh various expenditure categories dropped into the big buckets, uh no increase to salaries, which means, of course, no increase to the. Uh, correlating uh payroll benefits. Uh, we do increase the uh uh. Other areas, the the areas that that uh are subject to inflation increases by three percent. Um, and ultimately come out with a number, projected number of one oh four point nine, so right around a hundred and five million. So again, when we compare that number back to our revenue number, we would be looking at a deficit of about one point two five million. So. Essentially, what we are looking at as we move into next year is without any type of. An increase to compensation because of that steep year over year decrease in revenue. That the general fund is going to be in a deficit as as we move into that. Fiscal year without any increase to compensation. Which is a tough place to be, and obviously, um, as we build out, it it certainly makes those uh scenarios look more difficult. So. Let's look at another scenario. What we know, um, unless something drastically changes in the next few weeks, um, is that. By law, whatever the increase is to teacher, excuse me, to the target teacher salary of the state aid formula. The district has to increase the average teacher compensation by at least that same amount. Actually, it's ninety. Actually, it's ninety-seven percent, but, but very close to that same amount. So, under this projection, we're looking at what it would look like. If the district increase average teacher compensation by one point two five percent. Again, applied those inflationary increases and increase no other compensation across the board. I want to asterisk this just to say this is not something that, that we're considering, just looking at the, the various scenarios of how this impacts the system. So. As we look at the salary figure, applying that compensation increase just to the teacher personnel base. It would increase, uh, the salary portion of our budget about five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, the concurring benefits, uh, payroll benefits, about another seventy-three thousand. To get to a total figure of one oh five point six, which increases that deficit to about one point eight eight million. So again, as we start to increase that compensation base, deficit continues to increase. As we build outward from there, what would it look like if we took a one point two five per. Percent compensation increase to all employees in the system across the board. Again, retain the, the, uh, three percent inflationary increase. On the salary side, we see an increase of about eight hundred and fifty-four thousand. Payroll benefit increase of about a hundred and eleven thousand drives the total up to one oh five point nine. And the deficit to about two point two. As you can imagine, it's not a spoiler alert. As we continue to increase that number, the deficit continues to increase. So three percent compensation. To all employees. Increases salary by about two million, payroll benefits by about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Widens the deficit then to about three and a half million. And lastly, uh, just for demonstration purposes, what would that look like at five percent? Increases salaries about three point four million, payroll benefits four hundred and forty-seven thousand. And pushes the deficit just over five million. So again. Just trying to, to give you all an idea of what it looks like as we start to increase compensation. Um, and how that has impacts on the general fund at all those different levels. So, um. Again, the, the, the major takeaway here is. Because revenue, uh, on a, a year-over-year basis at this point, under, under this scenario. Decreases, we see that compensation has a ma- major, major impact on the, the surplus deficit. Situation that the, the general fund. So, um, lastly, just want to talk a little bit about, uh, deficit considerations. I think. Um, there's a lot of nuance in terms of what a deficit means and what that looks like. And, and ultimately how you deal with the deficit from a financial perspective. So. Um, really, uh, essentially there's four ways that you could deal with the deficit. First of all, you could cover the deficit with reserve cash from that respective fund. Um, lots of considerations there, of course, as, as you contemplate that, how much cash do we have on hand? How sustainable is the practice? Um, are we meeting our predetermined reserve level in terms of cash? Second option would be cover deficit with, uh, flexibility transfer from capital outlay. Um, again, lots of considerations there, w- w- of course, the availability of capital outlay revenue. Um, the impact on need areas within capital outlay, as we've talked, uh, often about in the past. Uh, there are a tremendous amount of needs, uh, within our, our capital outlay, uh, consideration in, in our system. Of course, uh, facilities being one of those and how does, um. Pulling flexibility from, uh, revenue from capital outlay impact, uh, those need areas. Um, and then again, uh, uh. How are we, uh, using capital outlay cash and, and what are we building towards in terms of, of capital outlay? And how does this impact, um, our ability to, to address whatever those needs are with cash? Um, of course, the third option would be reducing the budget to bring it back in line with revenue projections. Um, always a difficult process, but sometimes a necessary part of the process is, is looking at the budget and trying to make reductions or modifications where we can. Um, in order to, to bring expenditures back in line with those revenue projections. Or some type of combination of those three strategies and, uh, that's really where we've tried to be over the last several years. Um, especially in, in, uh, uh, my, my early years with the district is. How can we take all those different strategies and combine them and try to get to a place where we were, um, less dependent on flexibility? Uh, we were, we were modifying the budget where and how we could, um. And then ultimately, uh, uh, dealing with, uh, whatever the, the deficit situation was. Um, and making decisions, uh, that were least impactful on all the, the various funds that were involved in the situation. Um, a couple of other deficit considerations that are important to think about as well, uh. Budget to actual spending, spending trends. So of course, uh, the, the budget rarely ends up exactly like we think it's going to. Over the last several years, we have landed in about that ninety-six to ninety-eight percent budget utilization. Um, and, and that's, uh, obviously a big deal in terms of thinking about, um, the, the cash flow situation. And what that actually looks like as we, as we, uh, uh, try to manage that deficit. And then lastly, just future considerations, what material factors are changing in the next year or two or three? Um, that could change the position of any of those major funds over the next several years. And, and again. In the interaction, how does that, that impact, um, all those various scenarios and, and what that means? So, um. That was a, a, a really fast, uh, run-through of those, uh, uh, scenarios, but a few closing thoughts. I think. Unfortunately, we're, we're again in this difficult position of, of trying to be very responsible about our budgeting. Uh, but at the same time, understanding that we need to continue to increase compensation, um, to be competitive, to, to be able to recruit and retain. And so this, this puts us in a difficult situation, um, with, with the factors that we have on our hands. Um, it also has a, a very material impact on facilities, uh, through the reliance on capital outlay. And so we have to think, uh, very deeply about how and when we access capital outlay. And of course, uh, what type of an impact it has, uh, on, on our facilities and on our capital outlay situation in general. Um, again, in my time with the district, we, we've always tried to hit that sweet spot of. How can we manage this budget? How can we combine some of these different strategies to keep that, uh. Uh, deficit, if any, in, in a, in an area where we can, uh, manage it. And, uh, quickly modify it to bring it back in line without materially impacting the educational environment. And that becomes very challenging, um, especially when we're in a situation where we're, we're trying to increase compensation. Um, in trying to, uh, uh, recruit and retain, um, that becomes very difficult. But that's where we're at. And of course, uh, we will, uh, uh, continue to try to put the best strategy in play that we can. And, uh, I thought it was really important that, uh, as we continue to close in on negotiation. Uh, the board hears some of this information and, and have an understanding of how those, uh, compensation impacts change the scenarios we're looking at. So, uh, we'll continue through this process. Of course, uh, one of the next steps is, is coming to the board with. Uh, recommendations around negotiation out, negotiation allocations. Um, and then obviously working our way through the negotiations process. So, uh, with that, President Carr, I'll stop. And, uh, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
All right. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Sassy? Um, I'm debating whether the, whether to save mine for finance committee. Report, so I'll just, um, have that then. Um, but any board members, any questions, comments for, uh, Mrs. Clapham?
Um, so we talked about other things coming out of capital outlay. We have social studies curriculum this year. Is there another curriculum purchases coming up the next year? Am I correct that there's possibly a reading curriculum or? I just know that's often a big expense.
Yes, yes, great question. And, and I think, um. That's one of the difficult aspects sometimes about capital outlay, Jamie, is it's got this very cyclical process. Um, where we see, um, for example, uh, uh. There might be multiple curriculum adoptions one year and then the next year just really, uh, replacement materials and, and, and not a big adoption. And so we'll see these spikes and then come down and, and same thing, uh, like with technology, right? Where we'll have, um, large purchases and then, and then the next year will be fewer. And so sometimes it's, it's difficult to manage that very cyclical nature. Um, our, our curriculum department has always done a really nice job of looking well out into the future in terms of adoptions. And so, um. They have a, a, the, a budget document that they share with me. Um, it moves outward about five to six years at this point. However, they, they have scenarios like the rest of the world does where an adoption maybe didn't happen. And I think that's what we're looking at as we move into next year where there was an adopt, excuse me, an adoption slated for the current fiscal year. Which ended up falling into next year, um, or fiscal year twenty-six. Um, but yeah, you're right. There's, there's essentially a, a, a large adoption basically every year at this point. So. Um, and, and again, I think the curriculum department has done a really nice job of managing those and, and trying to do their best to stagger them out over time. But, um, obviously that's a, a high need area in terms of wanting to have good, good curriculum. So. And I know, uh, uh, I've talked a lot with Dr. Strasser and, um, um. I know that's something that, that he wants to dig into as well as, is looking at that over the next few years. So. Um, but yeah, typically there is a large adoption on a, on essentially a yearly basis, Jamie.
Hey, Mrs. Urban.
Thank you, President Carr. Um, I just, I think when we look at where we're going to be next year with our budget. It's, there's obviously some pretty big challenges. Um, but I think we have some wiggle room. There's some opportunities that we have because. You, Mr. Sassy and this board, um, previous to me being here, did a good job of cutting where we needed to. And, um, keeping spending in check. And so now we do have some options. Um, they're not all ideal, but they're, they're there. And like you said, staying in that sweet spot. So, um. You know, I, I don't, I think that school districts get a, a bad rap sometimes for not managing their budget well. And it's just not the case. Um, and we're an open book and the reality is we've cut a lot and, um, we've, we've made moves to really live within our means. So, um, it's going to be a little bit of a tough season, I think, going into negotiations. But I do think we have, um, some wiggle room and some opportunities to, um, continue to stay the course and, um. Really look at compensation and what we can do there. So, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Well said.
All right, well, I've changed my mind and, uh, might as well put my comments right here. Um, Katie is on the finance committee, Christine and myself are on the finance committee. And, uh, we, uh, Mr. Sassy, um, showed us this report and this briefing. And as Mrs. Urban said, um, I made a statement last year about when does the board actually do our job? Of managing the budget as mandated by the state. And so this is the time. Um, obviously with a deficit, we're going to have to figure out, um, how we make that up. And so each, each board member, you will all have your own ideas and thoughts about, um, how that happens. And then at some point as, uh, Mr. Sassy gives us, uh, his recommendation, then it will be up to us to. Um, um, to make those decisions and make those cuts or whatever we need to do to, um, get a balanced budget. Also, he talked about capital outlay and, uh, Jamie, to your point, um. It, it's, it, it, we're, I'm, um, I think it's Christine and I, we're co-authoring, um, a. Um, a policy to have the board, uh, annually be proactive in looking at capo- capital outlay. And, um, this is part of the process. So is there an option of getting the deficit from capital outlay? Well, depending on what your goals for capital outlay is, maybe there is, maybe they're not. And so that, that then your, your, as a board, your desire and you are managing, um, the capital outlay. Uh, will in some senses make a determination on if there's, uh, when there are deficits on how you do that. And so I think my main point is that, uh, for the, the seven of us, that we're, um, going to be more proactive. And more involved in really putting our, um, our finger in the cake batter, um, when it comes to, um, to making the budget. So. Um, Christine, was that, uh, that, that was it? I think that was, uh, with the report from the committee, uh, finance committee. That was kind of the main thought, um, around Mr. Sassy's, um. Presentation to us.
Yeah, totally, totally agree. You summed it up.
Okay, all right. Anything else, uh, about Mr. Sassy's report? Okay. I got the, uh, ten iPad, so. All right, we have no conflict of interest. We're on item twelve, approval of proposed agreements. I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed agreements. Oh, Mrs. Irmit.
Can I pull B? Twelve B.
Okay. Yes, thank you for reminding me about that. Yes, okay. So, um, let me re, any board member would like to pull any other agreement? Okay, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve proposed agreements, Alpha and Charlie.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, Shirley, roll call, please.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
Katie.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve proposed agreement, agreement with University of Northern Cali- Colorado.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, um, Shirley, will, can we get a roll call?
I think this, does Katie still have her hand up for discussion or no?
Well, okay. You don't, you can, if you want to say why, you can. If not, you can just make your vote.
Okay. Thank you. I wasn't sure what the appropriate.
Sure.
Procedure was. I am abstaining because my daughter attends University of Northern Colorado and she's going to be a student teacher. So it's, I think, um, mostly that this agreement involves her, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Shirley, roll call, please.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
And Katie.
Abstained.
Six, zero, and one abstain.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, item thirteen, any board member would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull O.
Okay, Oscar, anyone else? Miss Clapham?
To pull Papa, please.
All right. Well, we're, by the end of this process, we're going to be Marines yet. Okay, so Oscar, Papa, anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda except for items Oscar and Papa.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda except for Oscar and Papa. Shirley, can we get a roll call, please?
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
Katie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve item Oscar, uh, uh, Rapid City Area Schools legislative positions.
So moved.
Second, Christine.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Rapid City Area Schools legislative positions. Any discussion? Okay, I will say, um, uh, Ms. Dr. Strasser and, and Mr. Sassy. Um, this is a new process for us. And so we are smoothing out the ripples and one of the ripples that we understood. is how does a board member object to the suggested proposal? So just for clarity for everybody, um, administration, uh, puts together these legislative positions as a recommendation to the board. And then the board, after reviewing all their recommendations, approves or disapproves the positions that are proposed. And we already knew that we had a difficulty, you know, with, with so many different, uh, legislative bills. Uh, we, we, it was difficult to us beside going item by item to figure out, for example, if the administration, uh, suggested that we oppose a certain bill, but the board wanted to, um, support or, uh, 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 approve that bill. And so it's still in the kind of wonky stages right now. Um, and, and so, uh, what we decided to do, I guess our procedure right now is if there is even one bill that board members that you oppose, you can pull it and then, uh, not vote on the whole thing. Say no to the, uh, vote no on the whole thing, even if you only have uh, opposition to one until we figure out a way to individually come to an agreement or vote on each of the issues. I know that's clear as mud, but that's where we are. Mr. Berklin.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had to find my microphone. Um, so to add clarity, I think, and I hope, um, it's almost like the consent agenda where we're voting on the whole thing, but then we'll pull out the parts that we may want to discuss further. Is that?
In the, i- in this format, y- yes, but so it's kind, it would be kind of a two-pulling process. You pull the whole legislative position and then discuss your op, whatever piece of legislature that you are in opposition to administration. So it's almost like a, a dou- double pool. And so that's, it's a little awkward, uh, until we kind of figure out. This is our first year doing it this way, so um, we're going to bear, community, if you will bear with us as we bear with ourselves on kind of smoothing out how we do this editing. Okay, any other comments on the Rapid City Area Schools Legislative Positions? Seeing no discussion, uh, Shirley, can we have a roll call?
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Abstained.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Six, zero, and one abstained.
All right, thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the sped, uh, MOU.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the sped MOU discussion.
Uh, so I really, I, I pulled it one because I think a lot of people, um, at least I know a couple of us got, um, communication for community. There was a little bit of confusion on the wording in the email that Dr. Strasser sent out. And I one just wanted publicly say it does not mean only paying members to RCA. That was a concern and there were some people that were pretty, um, confused by that. I was able to clarify it to most people, but I wanted to say that on record. Uh, the other thing was just that eh, with negotiations and MOUs, it is very complicated. Um, as with any decision on the board, we we will never make everybody happy. And as I say, if you make everybody happy, you're doing something wrong. But, um, I think for people just to understand that a- at least I myself, as a single board member, I'm always very torn balancing, like I care for people and our staff and I want to support them and acknowledge them and appreciate them. Um, and I would love to be able to just give, give bonuses with, you know, so quote unquote carte blanche, but the need for the contingency and to have like have people sign contracts and for that to be part of this is that we also have to be wise with our resources of we know that we are in a critical situation with special education staff. So this is a balance of both and it doesn't say anything negative about any other staff member or are not valuing another staff member or another group of staff members in any way. Um, we, as, as you said, President Carso eloquently, I believe that all seven of us want the best for kids. And when we're looking at twenty percent of our students pretty much on IEPs and us being at critical staffing issues, like I think supporting and doing what we can to retain our special ed staff is doing exactly that, doing what's best for kids.
All right, thank you, Dr. Strasser.
Thank you, President Carr. Uh, yeah, th- these are, are challenging situations. Um, a lot of thoughts, a lot of detail went into this, uh, in, in talking through it on multiple levels, uh, in, in as far as the, uh, the language i- in the communication I sent out, uh, I understand there was a little confusion regarding, uh, the comments around RCA. Anytime there's compensation, um, y- you know, working through that, uh, we work with the bargaining unit, but that doesn't mean you have to be a member of the bargaining unit in order to receive, uh, that compensation. So, uh, apologize for that, uh, confusion or, or miscommunication. Um, I wanted, wanted to bring that, that forward and, um, uh, Ms. Clapton, just describe things very well. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on item Papa? Seeing no hands, Shirley, may we have a roll call, please?
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Ca- motion passes seven zero.
All right then, moving on, um, items for board information, we have CC dash E organizational chart, Dr. Strasser.
Yeah, uh, we needed to bring this forward, uh, for your information. Uh, it's an exhibit, so it's a part of the, uh, the current policy. Uh, when we brought in the Director of Positive School Climate and Culture, uh, we wanted to add that into the organizational chart. That's, uh, that's the main change, uh, that you see, uh, on, uh, on the organizational chart. So, th- therefore it's an informational item for you.
Any questions about that? Any board member have any questions? Okay, I think it's important that we, um, formalize that change so that um, the board officially, um, approves the current, um, organizational chart. So I would like to make a motion to accept the organizational chart um, as amended with the position of, somebody help me. What's, what's the name of the?
Director of Positive School Climate and Culture.
Okay, that one. Thank you very much.
I second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Shirley, can we have a roll call, please?
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Very much. All right, next item, Made for Shade, Pine Dell, um, school year, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. Who's?
Uh, Bishop Carr, I'll, I'll take that one, sir. President Carr, excuse me. Um, I, just a, a notification that, uh, the school had been selected for the Made in the Shade Grant. Uh, great grants, we've, we've received several of them over the years, uh, do some really cool things for the school. So just wanted to make the board aware that, that they had been selected for that grant. And I, I believe they'll be working through the process over the next few months and then um, hopefully have a structure in place this summer.
All right, wonderful. Board members, any questions? All right, seeing none. Next item, Secondary Social Studies Resource Adoption. Uh, Mrs. Roberts, Ms. Keegan.
Hi.
Dewar and, and Mr. Simmons.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Roberts. I'm the Director of Teaching, Learning and Innovation. And we are here tonight to bring forward information about our secondary social studies resource adoption. Please pardon me for having my camera off. I'm home with the flu and I didn't want to subject everyone to, uh, what that looks like. I do want to acknowledge and thank the RCAS staff who contributed to the secondary social studies resource adoption. There are many members of the adoption committee from RCAS middle and high schools, teachers and administrators from eight buildings, roughly thirty people. The committee members led the charge, but they also collaborated with the teachers who they repres- represented in their buildings. It took a lot of work and I'm grateful for their efforts and proud of what they accomplished. The process started in September, two thousand twenty-three. Several years ago, South Dakota adopted new social study standards that are vastly different from the standards that we had. Because these standards were so different, finding resources to match was a challenge. In addition, Rapid City Area Schools is very thorough in their process to find the best resources available by carefully vetting resources, netting them down to the two that best meet our needs, piloting those two, seeking feedback from students who participate in the pilot, the teachers and the community before the committee makes the decision. And of course, all of our financials are a consideration as well. The resource, these resources have been available on the school district website for the public to view since October. Tonight, Jerry Simmons, RCAS middle school teacher, Callum Dewar, RCAS high school teacher, and Nicole Keegan, the staff development manager, are here to tell you about the committee's selection and their process. Nicole, if you want to go ahead and get us started.
Thanks, Jennifer, and thanks, board, for letting us present to you. This has been a long process and you're going to get to kind of look through this. And thanks to Jerry and Callum for helping out with this. Um, they've been with this process since the start and we want to just kind of cover, um, this was not, uh, a, a normal adoption in the way that, um, we had staff that left our department who were in charge of the sta- adoption from the, the beginning. And then, um, once they left our department, I took this over with this team and it was, has been a pleasure to work with them. They are very focused on what's important to students. Um, and so it's fabulous being around those conversations. Um, the beauty of the adoption process within our TLA department is it is so formalized. So it makes it really easy to pick up, um, wherever we're at. And so you're going to see a lot of these same things as we come forward with both science next, um, and then next year with our ELA adoption. So there are going to be some pieces that I may be a little bit redundant to some of you who are in instructional council, but I know we have some new members who may not be aware of our adoption process. So I'm going to go a little bit into the details for that. I'm sorry, this may be things that you already know, but I figured it might just be good for everyone to understand how this works. I also want to take a quick second before I move forward. Helen Williams is new to our department. She joined on this adoption to help and support the teachers and myself, along with also just kind of getting formalized with our adoption process. Uh, moving on, we have our purpose statement. This purpose statement was crafted for the purpose of driving all of the work of this committee. I want you to take some moments to check it out because they specifically bolded text within this purpose statement to make sure that it was focused on during their work. Um, this purpose statement not only guided their work, it came up every single time they got together to remind them that this was the task that they put up in, ahead of themselves and wanted to stick to. Next, our committee membership. As you see here, we always seek out representation from all of our buildings to make sure that they have a voice within our committee work. Um, the committee participants also, as Dr. Er- Jen Roberts said, they communicate back to their PLCs and administration at their building level. So there's consistent communication all along the way. We want to make sure that everyone feels part of this process. Um, this group did a heavy lift of vetting these resources, um, to get down to two pilots per course or, um, grade level, kind of. Middle school all piloted the same resource. So for the social studies pilot, the voting committee members were also pilot teachers. Um, they piloted the two resources this year and the publishers will always tell you how fantastic their resource is. And I'm not saying that they are not, but these teachers were willing to put in the time and the grit because it's tough piloting a text and getting familiar with all the things, knowing you're using it for one unit. Um, and they really put in the work to make sure that the selection that they made was what's best for our kids at Rapid City Area Schools. And to me, that's really important because we're not just taking something that someone from us, another school district or another state said was fantastic. We made sure it was right for us. Um, piloting is also a really important part of the process because it gives us a really clear idea of what the resource is like day in and day out, um, both for the students and teachers. So, um, the committee, excuse me, we had other social studies teachers moving along with this committee and able to access the resources digitally. Um, the pilot teachers received class sets of the hardbound materials and teacher's editions. Um, that just allowed everyone to be aware of what the resources looked like and how to use them. All right, this timeline, this timeline has a lot going on in it and I want to take a second to, to really talk about all the pieces. Because it's really intense and for some of you, this is your first time seeing it or being aware of what our process looks like. So the work with this committee stal- started in fall of twenty-three. I know that is a huge step back in time. I can barely remember what I had for dinner last night, let alone what I was doing of back in twenty-three in the fall. So, um, the committee, once formed, they met to determine their purpose statement and their criteria that they were going to review the materials with. And that means all of those teacher and student usability pieces, which we'll talk about in a second. Another really large part of this process is determining the threshold for consensus. So when we adopt a resource with our pilot teachers voting, they do not put a fifty percent or majority rules. They usually, with most of our adoptions, it's seventy percent agree upon pilot, adopting that resource to move forward, which is really huge because if you think about it, if you make a majority rules, you still could have forty-nine percent of the people that didn't want that book. And that is something that we work very hard to not have. We make a very clear understanding of what the threshold is, probably to a point where it's like a nauseam um, for our committee members, but it's something that we know if we don't have it to start with, when we get to the point of picking out the resource that we're going to adopt, it can become a little ugly. So normally, when we start looking at resources, we use a third-party reviewer. Ed Reports is usually the one that we look at. Now, there are no social studies resources reviewed by Ed Reports. Um, and so for that, this group took the heavy lift of going all the way through for every standard to make sure that they were covered in the resources. That is what they have to do to reach or move through what we call tool one. So tool one is strictly alignment to the standards. Then, once they get done with tool one, they determine if there's any resources that don't meet the standards, they are then removed from the possibility of moving forward with what we call tool two. Tool two is where we move into this, it's the usability, what we call usability scoring. So for this group, they picked, and I'm just going to kind of go through this list to give you an idea of how much they look for in this resource. Um, integration with other content areas, so ELA, math and science, twenty-first century skills, um, technology, this includes integration with our ca- with our LMS, which is Canvas, um, but also differentiation tools within the, um, digital platform. All textbooks now have a digital platform, online platform. It's not just we buy a book and we buy a PDF of the book. Most of the digital platforms involve really heavy interaction, um, that students can use and teachers within their class. So that's something that we real- they really dove into, along with, um, tools for digital on, with on the digital dashboard for students, videos, um, does the publisher update their materials virtually? Um, that's a really big thing when you're looking at social studies because things change. Maps can become obsolete in a matter of minutes. So we need to make sure that they keep up with that because it's really important, especially with geography. Um, then we go into the area that they look at as support, which is like text-to-speech features for students to answer questions, supports for our English language learners, um, a variety of leaving, reading levels with the onco- online content. So that means students can change the reading level of the text or teachers can for the students. The use of primary resources, which our social studies teachers take very seriously, um, along with student collaboration within lessons, um, and then materials to support teachers in the content area. Because we think often about new teachers moving into a new content area, they need something to support them so they are prepared to go on and teach the content to students. The final part of the usability review is assessment. And this is anything from formative to summative, both paper pencil and it could be digital. Um, but also does it automatically provide feedback to students? How easy is it for teachers to provide feedback? Um, and does it assist in helping? And does it assist in helping teachers with how to use that assessment data and look at next steps for their learners? So there's a lot involved within this. So they did all of that work last fall and spring. Then they moved into determining their two pilot resources for this school year. So once they determined the pilot resources, we had beginning-of-the-year PD so that they could go ahead and be prepared for piloting that resource, which is a lot. We also, one of the things that we've moved to is asking publishers for a unit plan. So it helps the teachers really narrow down what they need to be looking for to teach the content because some of these digital dashboards become overwhelming. And we don't want to have that. We want them to be able to dabble in all the things, but we also want them to feel supported in the piloting process. So after each pilot, as Jen Roberts said, we have teachers, students, and then we also allow for community feedback on the piloted resource. Then, after the teachers complete both pilots, they sit down together, the committee members sit down and they look through the data. They look back on the student feedback and teacher feedback for each of the resources. Then they adjust that tool too. After you've actually used it, you definitely have a different look on the sum of the scores that you gave it back, you know, six months ago. So it's really important that they have that time to go back and look at the feedback and revise their tool too. So right now where we're at, they had their consensus, consensus, consensus threshold. And once they meet that, that is determined as our resource. If they don't meet the consensus threshold, which we determined far back, they will use Tool Two as their tiebreaker. So we always have something to fall back on, so we take the highest scoring resource on Tool Two. I know that was a lot and I'm sorry, but we made it. And now I move on to Jerry.
All right. Well, good evening. We determined out of all of that material that we looked at, this was the piloted material. And for middle school, six, seven and eight is going to be McGraw-Hill and Savas were the two pilots that we were looking at. High school world geography, they looked at McGraw-Hill and Discovery. And then US History one, two and three, they used McGraw-Hill and TCI. And then US Government looked at McGraw-Hill and TCI. And these were the two, for all of these, these were the material that we started the school year with, one of them. And then we did our six weeks and then we moved on and did the second pilot. And I think we all started with McGraw-Hill at the beginning. And so all, everybody across the district used McGraw-Hill as our first pilot. And then, on our next slide, the middle school, we had determined that we wanted one curriculum for middle school. We wanted to be able to use the same book because the last time we adopted curriculum, we had different books for each grade level. And that was something that we set out for. And after all of the pilots, we looked at, we decided that McGraw-Hill is going to be the one that we picked because some of the benefits are the adjustable Lexile level. We have across the district, reading levels that are all over the place. And we wanted to be able to adjust their reading level on the digital platform so that they can read. We as teachers can adjust that or the student can go in and adjust that reading Lexile themselves anytime that they want. But if we have a whole class, we know they're a little bit lower on reading, we can just adjust the entire class at once and that'll help the teacher and the student. It's got good vocabulary support in the text. You can, this got the vocabulary words highlighted and the definition at the bottom. That was something really that we wanted. It was concise and broad view, it provided facts and that it was linear. The timeline went just like you'd expect it to, and that's what we were wanting. It was dual side-by-side language for Spanish and English, which are our primary ones. That was in the book and that helps out because if we've got a student, English and one in Spanish and they're sitting side-by-side of their working group, they don't have to, they don't have to try to search through the book for what the word means. It's side-by-side and they can continue to work. There is a lot of primary resources which we liked and it was visually engaging. Some of the drawbacks that we found with this one was the tech integration with Canvas. That's kind of also, we, as middle school, we, other than East, all of the other middle schools had to start using Canvas this year along with piloting. So I think it was a twofold, like we were trying to do two things at one time. And the publisher did assure us that the hiccups that we ran into at the beginning of the year will be fixed. And some of the projects were limited, but we as teachers know that we're, we can always add projects and that we had already planned on doing that with whatever material we had picked. And that's just making it more engaging for our students. So this is what we went with, is McGraw-Hill for six, seven and eight. And that's our material for this rollout.
Thanks, Jerry. We're going to go move over to Callum from Central High School.
Good evening, Boards. Yes, my name's Callum Duer, history teacher at Central High School. And here we're going to look at the high school world geography. That's for ninth grade for freshmen and they chose to go with a discovery. Now, with this, I'll go for the drawbacks first and end of the positives. Drawbacks, there's no physical text, so there's no textbook in front of students there. And just to go on the same point that Mr. Simmons mentioned, that the Canvas integration has a couple of issues. The benefits though, and there was an easy integration in terms of on a classroom level with teachers, which was also, which was good. It's a really good planning resource for teachers. We always like that if it's easy for planning purposes, that's always good. And it has access to school-wide access to discovery experience, which opens up a whole host of other resources, including video materials and resources. And then looking at what, as we say in the high school, the upper house, which is US History one, two, three and US Government. What was really nice is that high school teachers have a great integration between US History and government. So having the same resource was very important for us as a team. I'd also like to point out that we were unanimous in our decision as staff to go with, for both government and history, the same resource, TCI. So it was unanimous in a collective agreement. The first point is a high-level, authentic, pre-made student engagement activities with real-world application. They have all sorts of different activities, including a game to understand the Great Depression in US History Two. And seeing kids then realize how that worked in a, on a natural, real-life level, that's what we're looking for in terms of engagement when it comes to our education practices. And there was all sorts of other things like, what did it look like during the era of McCarthyism in US Three? Again, through a game and students getting that experience instead of just reading something out of text, but actually experiencing it with their peers, which was really good. So that comes on to critical thinking assessment. And along with our goal as a district to have common assessment and to have common practices in our classrooms, that was essential when we made that decision. It allows us to have common assessment, which is, which is great. There's a student-friendly textbook that does accompany it. And what is really nice is that it's very dyslexia-friendly, the textbook. You haven't got bits of red around the board of the text, it's all on white paper. It's very clearly laid out, which is very good for being able to, to read it, which was excellent. Lovely planning resources, it makes it very easy for new members of staff to be able to grasp what we're talking about in terms of curriculum. There's variety when it comes to differentiation, which is, which is great in that level. Something that all of us discussed was that it creates a collaborative classroom culture, a positive culture in our classrooms. And that comes from the high engagement activities, doing the games, doing the discussions, having that real-life element. It actually creates a very positive experience in the classroom with our fellow peers. One big drawback would be that we will need to supplement in terms of our Chetis Shackleween standards. And that's going to be very essential within the History One and within History Two in particular. And so we have acknowledged that as a team and I'm sure we're working very closely with our OSU Department. It doesn't have very many videos in terms of resource. So when we were talking about the freshman course for geography, it'd be nice to be able to have that access on a whole school level to the discovery program there. There are some more steps when it comes to integration, when it comes to integrating on Canvas. A little bit more steps than we like, but overall, a very good student-centered curriculum.
Awesome. Thank you, Callum. I was mesmerized. Thank you. I would like to quickly talk about World History. So World History is a second semester class. And the World History teachers on the committee said, yes, the discovery resource would for sure work for them for World History. They enjoy digging into it and really utilizing that with their students. Now remember, World History is second semester to World Geography, who already adopted Discovery for Semester One. They though, because all the other teachers were adopting TCI as their resource, wanted to look at and have the possibility of giving this a very short pilot with TCI materials with their World History students. So they have been doing that for the month of February and will make a decision by the end of March. We will come back to you with that determination. So this isn't the last you've seen of me. Along with that, we've now made our determination of what we want to move forward with and implement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year using our social studies adoption committee. We have some next steps of determining how we're going to roll this out. Now, as you may know, South Dakota has some very unique social studies standards. So we cannot necessarily just use national standards to build our sequencing off of. So our teachers have a pretty heavy lift and that was the purpose initially for getting the pilots done so early is so they had this springtime to work on getting their pacing guides ready for next school year. Along with that, I'm sorry, there was one last thing I wanted to mention on the last slide. But along with that, as Callum mentioned, we do need to look at how to integrate the OSU's. We are waiting for that adoption to go through the State Board of Education in April before we move through with them for sure on this pacing guide as well. Any questions?
Let me see. Mrs. Clapham.
Couple comments and questions. One, I just want to say a huge thank you. It's a huge lift in general, but then to have to pick it up from a group that left is even a bigger lift. So thank you to you guys so much. And also just to really point out to the community, I think sometimes there's a narrative that, you know, certain ideologies or whatever are pushed from some, some place, some board, some person. And clearly, like the processes is taken, that there's no way that that's possible, that there's so many eyes and so many ideas and so many people looking at this, that this is a very holistic approach. So I really appreciate that. And also, the changing reading levels, I think is amazing, like an amazing part of curriculum. I absolutely love that and I wish we could do it like with all of them, that would be great. I was wondering, so he said on the World History, so it's, is it feasible that they could, the World History staff could say they like TCI better and so we could have, or they could like the other one better and so there could be kind of a partial, like they would use a different one and then the US Histories would use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we've allotted them that decision to make because we thought that would be fair. We didn't want them to select a resource without using it with students.
Excellent. And, and Callum, and I'm saying Callum because I don't want to butcher your last name, but you have me like wanting to come to history class, like the resources sounded really engaging and exciting and that makes me happy. So thank you for sharing.
But did you know that Callum plays the big pipes for his students as well?
Stop it. Now I need to come to this class.
People.
I'm coming to class.
It was on social media, so I knew what happened.
You're very welcome to Central anytime with this Clapham and you can come in, enter the classroom and see what we do.
Love it.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much. That was, it even, even the presentation was a team effort. And I'm sure all your research was a team effort. And I appreciate the, the heavy, I heard heavy lifting a lot. And so I understand that the stuff that's done behind the scenes that is not noticed. So thank you for doing that and it was a wonderful report.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, legislative report. Either, either Dr. Strasser or Mr. Sassy.
Thank you, President Carr. I'll lead us off and then of course, Dr. Strasser can add anything, excuse me, anything he has as well. So a significant amount of legislation since our last meeting has dropped. I know Dr. Strasser mentioned that he was going to update, as you talked about earlier, President Carr, this is a process we're still trying to tinker with and figure out the best way to approach some of these things. And so he, he mentioned that he sent you a new PDF, so hopefully you'll be able to follow along. Don't want to take up too much of time. Again, a ton of bills have dropped. Lots of bills that are aimed at, as we saw in the first half of the session, property tax relief and/or some type of voucher or educational savings account. So I'm just going to touch on a few of them really briefly. These were in the packet for recommendations for your, your official positions tonight. So SB one forty-one on the Senate side, this is a unique bill. It distinguishes between new construction and improvements to existing structures for purposes of calculating increases in revenue from property taxes. We recommended to oppose this bill. This explanation, I think, goes both for this bill and several of the other bills like it. It severely restricts a district's ability to increase its revenue. Of course, in this situation, existing structures make up the vast majority of property valuation. So not being able to increase revenue on those structures would be a massive blow to, to district's resources. So I see this as a really key bill for schools. Something that would have a dramatic impact on what property tax looks like. Also, on the Senate side, SB one ninety, this is an education property tax credit for parents that send children to private school or homeschool. I should have mentioned at the beginning of this, so Dr. Strasser and I discussed this as well. And so you may see bills on here, Board, that have already been killed throughout the process or withdrawn. And at times, the, the reason that Dr. Strasser and I wanted to include those, even if they're, they've been killed, are number one, that we have likely given our lobbyists the go-ahead to represent us, of course unofficially, on that bill. And so we felt like it was important to make sure that it got back to you and that you as a board or as individuals had the opportunity to either, either support our recommendation or, or give your input on that. And then number two, that, that often in a session, those bills will come back through a smokeout or hoghouse or any of the various different sayings that I don't really understand what they're talking about. And so taking a stance on those bills, even if they've been killed, helps as they come back to, to educate and understand the situation. So I should have mentioned that SB one ninety being one of those bills that, that has been killed, died out on the floor, but was an interesting bill in the sense that it created a tax credit for, for parents choosing private school or homeschool. And again, this is a similar rationale to all these other bills. It removes resources from the district, encourages disenrollment, reduces property taxes with no revenue replacement. So not a good bill for, for schools. There are, are multiple bills, both on the Senate and House side, that propose ballot measures to, in some way, amend, limit, abolish the, the property tax system, especially around how, how districts operate those. So on the Senate side, there is a bill, SJR five oh six, which proposes a ballot measure for an amendment to the state constitution, limiting to a flat rate the real property tax increases. So again, I won't get long-winded on it, same rationale as the other bills, restricts the ability to increase the largest single revenue source for school districts, the majority of school districts, which is property taxes. Bad, bad bill for schools. Switching over to the House side, just a few bills to quickly mention. HB eleven eighty-five, again, this is a bill that's died. However, that provided that public monies for education may not be used for lobbying purposes. Our rationale in opposing that was that school districts should have autonomy in these decisions. There's inconsistencies in, in this bill. It doesn't address lobbying by other organizations and it, and there should be a fair playing field in terms of if, if one organization or, or sector is going to be limited in terms of lobbying, that, that all sectors should be limited. HB twelve twenty-nine exempts dollars from property taxes and implements a tax credit process without revenue replacement. Same, same rationale, it harms the district from a financial perspective. HB twelve thirty-five, another bill aimed at reducing or limiting, excuse me, the annual increase of property taxes. Um, HB twelve thirty-five, another bill aimed at, at reducing or limiting, excuse me, the annual increase of property taxes. Um, same rationale again. And then lastly, um, on the House side, um, HJR five zero zero five, which proposes a ballot measure to cap property tax valuation. So um, again, it really restricts the district's ability to increase revenue. Um, and furthermore, uh, uh, makes it more difficult for districts to bond, opt out, issue capital outlay certificates, any of those things. So uh, just a brief rundown of, of some of the major bills. Um, it's been a really interesting couple of weeks since we last spoke about the legislative process. There's a lot going on in peer. Um, really interested to see how the, the second half of, of the uh, session wraps up. So um, with that, President Carr, uh, I'll turn it over to Dr. Strasser and then ultimately to questions from the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sassy. You, you laid it out really well. The majority of bills, I'm not going to uh, go through in, individuals, but the majority of bills uh, really kind of connect to uh, more cultural uh, issues. And, and, and I think you could see that as you go through. And then there's a lot of curriculum based ones. And, and when you look at those, uh, it really comes down to local decision making, that autonomy of, of our local district and really trying to look at, at these bills and say, um, should this be at our level? And, and the majority of them uh, really should be. And, and that's, that's why we um, oppose uh, many of these bills, especially on the, uh, on the House side. Um, so I think that local control is important. Uh, I think there, there's some overreach uh, uh, that comes. And i- and you have to be kind of aware of that. Um, one, one of the more interesting newer ones is that last one on the House side. Uh, the six thousand uh, five, because it talks about electronic devices and we know that that's a, a hot topic. Um, just in the learning environment, how do we protect that learning environment? Uh, so uh, I look at that and I, I say every district has a policy. Um, so why does the state need to mandate a policy? And I think, I think that's a debatable um, uh, look at, at how do we solve uh, an issue that, that pops up uh, quite frequently and is a challenge in the classroom. So um, that's, that's why the, the neutral one there. Uh, and then likewise, uh, on, on the uh, Senate, Senate bills. Again, um, kind of the, the cultural, excuse me, cultural or uh, or the curriculum pieces coming in uh, is really uh, what I was uh, looking at in, and uh, the majority of bills. So that's, that's how I've been uh, uh, making recommendations.
Hey, thank you for that report. Um, I don't want to have necessarily a thirty minute conversation, but board members, do you all have any uh, initial suggestions on how to uh, tame this position? Paper, um, do we need to have an opinion on everyone? Uh, maybe just the top twenty, maybe just the ones affecting finances. I mean, you can do it in so many different ways. Um, does anybody have in a, an initial thought on how we can kind of tame the beast at this point? Mr. Berklin.
Uh, yeah, mine's more procedural, I guess. Um, to avoid the pulling, pulling, I wonder if we move it out from the consent agenda into its own kind of item, so that it's already like pre-bold. Um, and then we can pull out items, um, because there are, I do kind of like having all of them, because even I feel like little things can become big things. Um, and so it's hard for me personally to like, see where we would kind of delineate that. Um, so I do like having all of them, but at the same time, if uh, Cory and Coy and Kelsey and whoever's working on this are feeling overwhelmed, I'm also understanding of that of if there does need to be a line drawn. But uh, main thing I was going to say was maybe we pull it out of the consent agenda.
Okay, uh, uh, Mrs. Clapham.
Uh, I, I think that's a good suggestion. This is, it is complex, complex and a heavy load. And this is actually probably not an immediate solution, but I know if you look back, President Carr, at the list of committees. At one time, there was a legislative committee that existed. Um, and then it sort of disappeared. Um, and I think it was because we just really weren't able to be as active in peer. We didn't have a lobby, so we didn't. So this is kind of down the road, but is that then kind of a, not temporary, but a part of the year um, committee that then kind of helps break it down, just like, you know, a policy, just like, you know, that brings things forward to us and, and smaller, more digestible bites, I suppose. Um, that's, that's just a thought. Again, like it can't really happen this legislative session, but I think in the future, that might be a good idea.
Hey, uh, Mrs. Stephenson.
Um, I also am under the weather, which is why I don't have a new video on right now. Um, but I I, I think that um, I don't have a lot of great suggestions for how to make this process better. And I think part of the reason is, uh, I don't know if any of you read ASBSD's legislative update and they, they kind of did a summary of like, this is how many bills that we're opposing. And historically, this is how many we've had to oppose. And this is how many bills we're supporting. And historically, this is how many. And it really, if you, if you missed it, go back and read it. It really hits home how unusual of a year this is. So I, I appreciate the feeling of like, boy, this is a wild beast to tame. And I also appreciate, I, not to say that there's no better way to do it, but that um, it, it really is, I, I don't know how to, how to do it better, given just the sheer volume of bills that keep getting put forth every day in peer this year. So that's my thought, not, not a lot to contribute.
Thank, no, that was good. Thank you, Mr. Sassy.
I, I just excellent points from everyone, some really great suggestions. Certainly, there's, there's a lot of ways we can get better and we will get better. I, I do wo- want to reiterate what Christine just said, which is um, I've been doing this job for sixteen years and looking at the legislation. And this year is such an anomaly in terms of the, the volume of bills brought forward. And um, I don't know if that's a, a new, new uh, uh, situation for us or not, but, but I, I do think that um, you know, not only in, in my own observation, but talking with uh, Mr. Nelson, our lobbyist and and some of the other folks near this situation, it's, it's just an incredibly intense year in terms of the number of bills being brought forward that directly impact public education. So um, you know, w- we'll see how this, this pans out for the, the remainder of the session. But um, I think those are all great ideas and, and good thoughts about how we get better. And, and then certainly acknowledging that, that it is a bit of an anomaly at this point um, is necessary as well. So, so great thoughts from everybody.
Ms. Clapham.
One other thought, I just, it kind of came up um, in the state and the ASBSD conversation. And I don't know, you definitely want to combat things kind of at the first level, but one thought is looking at the calendar as far as crossover day and saying, okay, if something makes it to crossover, then at, do we address it at that point? Or do we, because sometimes if we're addressing everything even in committee and things don't even make it out of committee, then it's like, well, maybe they wouldn't have made it out of committee anyway. Um, so that's something to think about. I said, not saying that we don't care about it even from its initial state. But if we are, you know, there's ten bills in education committee and then only three of them even like come to the floor, then maybe we, we manage our resources in time with like, okay, this hasn't come out of, even come out of committee. Maybe we don't deal with it until, you know, we know it's come out of committee or just, and I'm kind of just spitballing here, like stream of consciousness. But just thinking of ways to maybe manage it easier.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I think all of those are um, are doable. Mr. Berklin, I think we can take it out of consent agenda and have it on its own um, own item. So um, you can discuss whatever particular um, legislation you want. I think Mrs. Clapham, that was, um, also I forgot that that was a committee. Um, and I, I had never seen us be this active, so I didn't know what it was. So um, whoever you all elect as the, um, the president, the, in, in the end, in the middle of the year, um, that can be a suggestion to them uh, to have that committee. And I think that's even a better flow, because then that committee would meet with um, Coy, Cory and and um, and Chelsea, um, Kelsey and hash out all, you know, all the details and what do we do and what do we don't. And then that committee brings that report to the board and say that we feel these issues, we should have an opinion on. And, 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 and that again then goes better with the process of committees, bringing it to the board and then making that vote. So I like both of those ideas and uh, don't really see why we can't implement it. And it would streamline uh, the process where all seven of us wouldn't have to be involved in figuring out whether we opposed it or approve it. We would just uh, trust those on the legislative committee. So, um, all right, thank you. So uh, again, it, we, it's too late to implement those two ideas this year, but that's, I think that's, those are both easy fixes and would, would help us in the process. So thank you very much. All right. Anything else on the legislative report? All right, Mr. Sassy, as you know, uh, um, we pulled out the facilities pillar uh, update uh, from his presentation on last week. And so we're having that at this time. So Mr. Sassy, take it away.
Sorry about that. Had myself muted. Um, thank you, President Carr. As we had uh, discussed, um, after talking with Dr. Strasser and Casey Belkowiac, that uh, we felt it would be best to um, remove this uh, uh, pillar from the discussion and, and make sure that uh, uh, we had a, um, I'm sorry, guys, I'm getting some interference. Can you hang on one second?
We can hear you fine.
Okay.
I don't have any interference.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. I don't, um, so again, felt that it would be best to uh, uh, pull this pillar out. It's a, a bit unique as we talked about uh, previously and, and discuss that on its own. So um, doing that tonight. So uh, uh, brief uh, pillar progress update here. Um, again, I, I've been messing around with AI. So those are not our construction workers in the district or our facilities. Um, but uh, 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 it's h- helping me put together usable presentations here. Um, so, um, I'm really sorry, I'm getting sorry about that, guys. Um, so again, uh, uh, facilities pillar, RCS will ensure safe, modern, effective learning environments by building, improving and maintaining facilities to meet changing educational needs. Um, as we discussed, we, we really broke this pillar down into two sections. We felt that statement um, was really too different and distinct areas. So the first being safe, modern and effective learning environments. Um, and then the second being building, maintaining, building and maintaining facilities to meet changing educational needs. Uh, so around the safe, modern and effective learning environments, our measure of success was really leaning on that facility performance index. And I'm going to show you that again here in, in one moment. Um, that, that really breaks down. Um, as we discussed, our, our pillar, uh, as a pillar champion group, what did we feel were the elements and the criteria that made up a safe, modern and effective learning environment? And then scoring all of our facilities out uh, based on those, those measurements. Um, so uh, the baseline for that um, performance index score, uh, average across the, the, all the buildings, um, as we developed, that was a fifty-three. Our success measure for the current fiscal year, twenty fiscal year twenty-five was increasing that one point five points to fifty-four point five. Here is, um, actually, I'm going to touch on this part and then I'll, I'll come back to that. Um, second portion of the pillar being building, maintaining facilities to meet changing educational needs. Um, the, the success measure here really takes two different elements and, and combines them. As we um, started working through uh, this pillar, um, the pillar champion group uh, developed what we called an impact project plan. So as we looked at capital outlay and we planned the resources um, of, of really what we were going to try to address um, with capital outlay, um, again, looking at the, the various criteria uh, on the performance index. What projects were we targeting throughout the next five to ten years? That were really going to uh, make a major impact on that performance index, um, and pulling those up and putting them in a plan. Um, then as we continued to evolve throughout this process, uh, we also started to discuss the idea of master planning. Uh, we jumped into that process. And so now what we will do after we have the master plan is take uh, the, the various uh, projects laid out by the master plan, combine those in, in co- with the impact project plan that we already developed. And that will really serve as our, our impact project plan that we'll look at over the next ten to fifteen years in the district. Um, so our baseline was, of course, we had to develop all that, um, including the master plan. So in the process of that. Um, and then of course, uh, uh, the, the success measure being the, the execution of those projects for that uh, particular year. So I wanted to include this, um, a- as we've worked through this process, this is always something that's really stood out to me. Um, especially around the facilities pillar that um, wh- what we're really trying to do, what we're really aiming for is moving from those random acts of improvement, which is, is how it felt. Um, we've operated over the last several years in terms of, of looking at our facilities um, and starting to pull those arrows together and aim them all the same direction. And I think that's really been one of the major benefits of, of working through this strategic plan. And this pillar is really, really trying to flesh out, how do we bring those arrows together and point them the same direction? Um, so this continues to be uh, really a mainstay of our conversations um, a- around this pillar is how do we continue to align those acts of improvement and pull them all together? So um, I, I tried to stick with the same prompts uh, that, that uh, you all saw in the other pillar updates. Um, so one of the prompts was uh, pillar bright spots. So a couple of bright spots around uh, uh, data and then a bright spot around um, where we're moving as we move forward. So um, first of all, uh, increased performance index score. So again, as you just saw, the, the goal for the end of this fiscal year was fifty-four point five. One of the really amazing things about this tool, um, that, that Jade developed throughout this process is that as projects are being completed, Jade is able to in real time go in, update the projects and then determine how it impacts uh, the overall scores for that particular school and then of course the average. So uh, one of the amazing things that we can see really essentially at any time throughout the year is what that current score looks like in comparison to where we started that particular year. And in our case, uh, we had a goal of fifty-four point five and we're currently at a fifty-seven. Um, and I'll just show you very briefly, uh, that, that uh, again, that in, index performance. So we have all of our categories there on the left. Um, safety and security, uh, modern aesthetics, effective learning environment, um, weighted. And then of course, scored out by school across all, all the, all the various schools. And so, um, you'll see here uh, at this very bottom portion, current average being a fifty-seven. So um, not only have we uh, exceeded our goal for the year, but we still have um, several months of the, the year remaining. So as projects get finished, we'll continue to feed them into this and, and see how that impacts the score. But uh, one of the really great parts of, of having this tool is that we can break that down um, on, on a, on a real time basis. Um, one of the other major benefits, uh, as, as again, we try to pull all those areas and point them in the same direction is that this gives us the ability to make criteria based decisions. So again, in the past, I think we were doing some really good things. However, uh, because we didn't really have a set of criteria that we could look at and say, hey, here is all the most important things about our buildings and, and where we need to be pulling them. Um, our arrows were, were again pointing in a lot of different directions. And, and what we've done now is uh, with the performance index is, is really give that the ability to guide project selection um, in terms of, of capital outlay, decision making, um, and investment decisions. And, and where do we uh, point the district's resources uh, as, as the, the best investments? And how do we um, again, start to pull those arrows in the same direction? So uh, really has been a, a really beneficial part of this year. Uh, this has been the first year with the uh, performance index in place as we've worked through the capital outlay uh, budgeting process. And, and so it's really helping us to um, look at, at the, the various uh, projects that are sitting out there and determine where are the most impactful projects that, that we can invest in. Um, and then lastly, it really gives us a roadmap for improvement. So um, as I explained, uh, uh, combining the master plan, when we have that uh, finalized and the impact, impact project plan really is going to lay out uh, in terms of larger scale um, construction in, in renovation projects, what the district looks like for the next uh, ten to fifteen years. And so we really have our roadmap in place and then And then it really becomes about how do we align the resources to that roadmap? Um, so again, as we look into the future and, and some of the leading indicators, that is really a, a major benefit that, that we're laying out our own roadmap. There's not going to be any question about where we're going. We, we know what the major projects are. Now we just have to line up the resources to, to achieve them. Um, a couple of barriers. Uh, so one of the prompts was any, any barriers or challenges to improvement. Well, we've talked about this quite a bit. Um, capital outlay is, is tough. Um, really, again, given the idea that the, the capital outlay side of this is the major driver behind, uh, progress and improvement to the facilities. Um, it, it can be difficult because there is a very erratic nature to the capital outlay project cycle. Um, you often have, uh, of course, uh, uh, projects that are scheduled to be finished in a fiscal year that for various reasons end up spilling over into the next fiscal year. And so, um, there's a very erratic nature of, of, are we hitting the projects on a yearly basis? That, that we believe is going to increase that, that performance index score. Um, and, and managing all that can, can be difficult. I think, um, even in the, the year that we've been doing this, we've seen some ways that, that we can, um, help to manage that. Um, and again, it's all, all about ultimately increasing that average score. But again, that can make it difficult as we, as we look and plan out into the future. Um, and then secondly, of, of course, resource availability, the, the entire pillar hinges on resource availability and, and how we align that with priorities. So, um, if we have difficult years, uh, if coming off the conversation we just had, if we have legislation that dramatically changes, something about the budgeting process or the revenue picture, um, that can, can heavily impact, um, this pillar in, in the projects that we're looking at to try to, um, increase those scores. Um, and then a couple of next action steps. So again, uh, I think the next major action steps would be, uh, finalizing the master plan. Um, and then combining those results with the impact project plan and, and looking at, uh, uh, that, that plan over the next 10 to 15 years. Um, and then, and then of course, uh, just continuing to adjust that action plan and refining, um, based on our, our integrated results, uh, how we move into the future and tweaks we need to continue to make to that process. So, uh, short and sweet board, uh, that's, that's the, uh, end of the pillar update. Happy to answer any, uh, questions that you may have.
All right, board members. Excellent report, Mr. Sassy.
Thank you, sir.
Um, any questions for? Mr. Sassy. Okay. You have until I find my agenda, which is now. All right. Uh, at this time, we will have committee reports. Any, Mrs. Urban?
Thank you. I, um, am going to let Mr. Berkland, um, do some of the Public School Foundation Committee Report. But I did want to mention that, um, I am on the Teacher of the Year Committee and we were supposed to unveil who our Teacher of the Year is tomorrow at five o'clock, but because school has been canceled, we are canceling that event as well. But we are going to, um, go to the school where the Teacher of the Year works and announce it on Thursday morning, um, as well as travel to a number of the other schools to, to congratulate the, um, winners. So, um, more to come on that on Thursday. We're super bummed that we can't have the event. But, um, as Ms. Hornick, the executive director said, maybe, maybe having a snow day is a, a nice prize for some of these teachers. So, um, and I just wanted to mention that I was, I had the privilege of sitting in on the, um, interviews for the top 10. And it was like one of the best experiences I've had as a board member, just getting to hear what they do and how innovative they are. We just have some incredible educators in our district. And I'm so, uh, proud of them and proud to be part of it. Um, and then on the facilities committee, um, we talked a little bit about potential bond, um, amounts and pricing and what that might look like, um, for community members. So we have a lot more to discuss on that, but we just kind of Koi showed us some different numbers and that was helpful for us to kind of just get an idea of, uh, where we might be. Um, we discussed an expansion at Rapid Valley Elementary School. That's been talked about in the past, but there hasn't ever been anything concrete, um, as far as plans drawn up. There is so much crowding happening in the valley right now. And so we really need to look at something, um, sooner than later because it's going to be an issue where we're going to have to make some pretty hard decisions if we don't start working towards something. So, um, we are going to look at whether that's even feasible, the cost of it, um, what it might look like. Um, and potentially could have it done for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And they would do, hopefully do air conditioning at that time too, for that building. But we won't know until April or May, um, whether, you know, what the cost might be and what kind of, um, what we're really looking at there. So that's just, um, a little bit of information for right now, but more to come in the next couple of months on that. Um, I think that's all I really have to contribute. Um, the bid, I guess the bid came in for the central library. We voted on that, but that's pretty exciting. That's going to be a nice, um, and very needed upgrades over in that. And same for Stevens, um, some of the projects happening there. So, anything to add, Christine or Donna?
No, I think you did a nice job. Both of my committees have been very well covered tonight.
Yeah. Um, Mrs. Urban, I did have a question at some point, I, I don't, I, obviously I'm not on facilities, but I think Koi shared a little bit with me what's happening, uh, with the growth in several areas and what would happen. Is that something that you think? Some information that would be important to, um, speak to the community or present to the community about doing one of our board meetings, just to kind of let them in on the pro, you know, of what he's talking about and the movement. And if we don't do this, this is going to happen. I, I, I kind of feel it would be, but I don't know if, if that's something you think the committee would recommend.
I definitely would. I can't speak for the others, but I think, you know, just this, this is my area and it's something that I hear about every time I walk into one of our valley schools is there's so much crowding. We have large class sizes. It's not going to get any better because we're seeing all the growth. Um, you know, the houses popping up, the apartment buildings. So we've been talking about it a lot. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea at all to have just a more, um, concrete sort of presentation about what we're seeing and potential solutions, things we're talking about. And a lot of that too, um, you know, well, some of that, there'll be some crossover with the, uh, facilities report. But this is really kind of its own beast and it's a pretty pressing issue.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, okay. So next time, if, when you all have your facilities committee, if you can talk about what that looks like. As you were talking, I was thinking about, um, since, uh, Mr. Koi is such a handsome man, him doing a video, um, of, of that. And, you know, again, showing and that way he wouldn't have to say it every time and, and whoever would want to look at it later. Um, because the issue is not changing, right? It's, it's only getting worse from where, from wherever it is right now. It's just getting wor- worse. So even a video would, I, I think would succinctly, um, put out that information. Okay. All right. Anything else for Mrs. Urban? Mrs. Clapham? Oh, oh, Ms. Clapham. Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
I just lowered my hand real fast. Um, uh, so one, um, community outreach will actually meet tomorrow morning. Um, we've had to pivot a little bit on our meeting times just due to schedules. But, um, a heads up on that though, next week are our listening sessions for staff retention. So that's kind of crept up because February is a short month. So it feels like we just did the ones on busing, but then, um, our listening sessions will be next week, Tuesdays is at RCA and then, um, Thursday, um, via Zoom. So heads up on that. And, uh, policy will meet on Monday. So that hasn't met yet. And my main, uh, one was yesterday was the quarterly, uh, Board of Directors for Associated School Boards. And so just wanted to give some highlights from that. Um, lots of good news, um, shared and one of them was so in January, there was, um, every year there's an advocacy, a nationwide education advocacy and the leadership on ASBSD attends that. And, uh, there were some interesting, they were able to meet with Senator Rounds and I will just close this directly. Um, you know, they said, we are concerned about vouchers and he said, you should be. Um, and they were a little bit taken aback by that statement. Uh, but what it kind of opened their eyes to was he said, well, and he showed like expenditures through the Department of Education over the past 20 years and we're pouring this money in and we're not getting different results. And, uh, the, in essence, the group kind of said, you know, I think we need to look at if there's going to be changes. The problem is, is that right now, everybody knows the rules we're playing by, but with not knowing what the plan is, if the Department of Education or all these changes is, no one knows the rules. And so the really, the communication there was like, help us understand what's next. If this is the plan, if this is where we're going, like, how do we understand as districts, what we're supposed to do? If we don't know like how funding is going to be managed and handled. So I thought that was a good perspective. Um, they, they did say one of the ideas is like block grants being provided to the states. And the challenge with that is we don't currently, South Dakota and many other states don't have the infrastructure to manage those grants. Like we would need so many more people to work at the Department of Education and they would have to have the qualifications to manage millions and millions hours of grants. And so that was a, a challenge and something to communicate to our legislators is like, yeah, we don't, we don't have the infrastructure to do that. Um, other things, they talked about several of the, um, bills and mainly that said, there's really a lot of theme and they're focusing on many of the bills really take away local control. And that's one of the things that South Dakota has always prided itself in is that local control. And so all these deals trying to make state mandates really remove that. And so really just using that language and focusing on that. Um, that that's, you know, not something that we as a state historically have done, and it's not something that we want to shift to. Uh, the one thing, uh, two other things that were brought up that were interesting was that the changing of the time of, of elections, though it wouldn't affect us, like we always do ours in June and November. But a couple of, a few districts are saying they're concerned because when you can do elections could affect when bonds are presented, which can actually affect construction cost. And so, cause they said, then you're crossing over fiscal year. So they said, that's a big concern is that you could be actually costing districts money by making it to where they can only do a bond at a certain time, only because you lose certain times of the year, you lose building time. And so that could actually be like financially detrimental to districts. So there are a lot of people that feel pretty strongly about that. Um, the other thing you, I had mentioned that the CFO did, uh, resign. Um, she is staying on through March. But, uh, they do have two or three people, um, who have already applied and are interested. So it looks like that position will be filled with a qualified person here pretty soon. And the only other thing is the next meeting is in, um, Sioux Falls in April. And that the, uh, experienced board members are know usually in the spring, they start, ASBSD starts to have webinars on different topics. And, um, I'll be presenting one, um, about, um, healthcare, staff and students, mental health in April. And then there will be other topics, um, that will be presented to. So when those come up, I have joined them before and they just, they make for a really good, robust conversation of different perspectives and different people ideas through the state. And, um, they're usually done in evenings and so you can get on for an hour and participate in those. But we always wait till after the legislative session's over, um, to start those. So those are kind of the updates for the state. And there is, there will be an opening for the second vice president, um, of ASBSD, which the way it works with that is that person moves up in succession to president eventually. And those interviews, um, will happen over the summer and then it would be announced at the meeting in Sioux Falls in August. So if anyone's interested in being an executive for ASBSD, there will be an opening.
Hey, thank you, um, Ms. Clapham. Um, I, I think as I heard your report and obviously this issue, issue of, um, homeschooling, school choice, whatever the name is, um, while public schools have not had to deal with that push in our nation before, um, we're, we're going to have to do public school differently, right? We're, we're now in, in competition for the dollars that are giving to us. And I, I think, um, Ms. Urban, I'm not going to let your idea die. But again, when you're a business and competing with other businesses, then you obviously have to let, um, those people that, uh, that, that are your customers know what you're doing and why they should, um, come to RCAS and, um, that might, um, not might, but that's going to take maybe some more finances in advertising who we are, what we do, why we're best for your kids. And, uh, and so I think that's important. And so, uh, Mrs. Urban, as, as we're in the budgeting process, that advertising budget is a part of how we, um, um, tell the community, um, about more students. And then, uh, Ms. Stepherson, that goes to your idea too, of having a goal of, of increasing the district by whatever number, uh, we say. But again, um, that's going to take, um, uh, finances. And we're seeing that we can't just sit back and, and just wait for stuff to happen to us. We've got to really be proactive, um, to, to let our community know why they should send their kids to, uh, Rapid City Area School. So, um, I'm with you, Mrs. Urban and, um, we'll, maybe we'll march into Mr. Sassy's office and make some demands about the budget. So we'll, we'll see what happens. All right. Anything else for Ms. Clapham? Seeing none, Mr. Berkland.
Thank you. Um, before I go into my report, I just wanted to say, related to kind of that same thing, um, in advertising, I, I think it's really easy to advertise really high scores for like a private school when you can take whoever you want. It's really easy to get really high scores when you only take the top 10% or whatever. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there that I totally agree. We need to advertise and then we also need to combat some of these ideas that our scores are so low because of whatever. Um, as I've said many times, come in, talk to us, talk to an admin, talk to a teacher. If you're listening out there, anyone will gladly walk you through the great things that we're doing, um, even if that doesn't necessarily show up on paper.
Um, Mr. Berkland, let me comment on that. And again, that just circles back into Rapid City Area Schools doing a better job telling our story.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So we, if, if we're not going to pat ourselves on the back, who is? They are, right? They're, oh, public, uh, private school is this and that and, and all the, so we have to, we have to fight fire with fire. And so far we haven't, um, put the resources to do that. So that's very important.
I'm a hundred percent with you there. Um, the only other thing that I was going to add, speaking of wonderful things, is, um, with, uh, what Katie Art had already mentioned, the canceling of the event. Unfortunately, that means that the public will not be able to join and we can't, one, we don't really want to invite the public into school in the middle of the day. Two, we can't really tell you where to go because that would give away who the winners are. Um, but, um, on the website and the Facebook for the Rapid City Public School Foundation, they will be posting videos, live streams, who all the winners are. Um, and kind of along those same lines, um, there are additional awards this year of support person of the year. Um, they're doing some years of service awards for teachers and staff who have five, 10, 15, 20 years of experience. Um, and so really, really great things to be celebrated there. The only other thing I was going to add is, um, Evening Excellence is coming up as well already in April, uh, which sounds far away, but is not, um, on April 24th, once again, that is. And we are in the planning with that. We just met with the monument to kind of set up the stage and make the minor changes that we've made uh, for this year, the big one being some additional awards there as well. Um, and so we're really, um, I think we could work with the Rapid City Public School Foundation to really spread that word. And I know that, um, Bobby and Sarah Hornet from the, uh, foundation have been in contact about that. Uh, but I think that's also a really great avenue to spread some of that, some of that advertising.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Um, as I said, we finance committee kind of gave our report from, um, doing Mr. Sassy's talk. And the policy committee, um, you all obviously get to see, um, what we're working on because there's the first reading and then you approve it. So, um, that seems to be a little self-explanatory except for, uh, and I think I've mentioned that before too, that we are working on and I think I've mentioned that before too, that we are working on a policy and I'm excited about it because I I will learn how to how to start a policy from scratch and take it all the way hopefully to your approval about our capital outlay. So all right, Mrs. Urban?
I don't want to give it too detailed of a report, but we did have an OCR Committee Meeting last week and kind of the theme was that there has been a lot done in terms of some of the boxes that needed to be checked per the agreement. So Kit was able to, Ms. White was able to show a spreadsheet of what has been done. They are going to be getting some different trainings out via video and then we are going to start the Stakeholder Committee Meetings in March, towards the end of this month and then in March. So what I'm most excited about, though, is that they are going to be giving the board a report during a board meeting, a more extensive one a couple of times this spring. And so I I'm looking forward to that. I think that they'll obviously do a better job of just going through the details of what's being done. And so that's coming here in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you for that update. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, let's move on to others. Any other? Mrs. Clapham?
Um, very briefly, I just wanted to say I got to go to both wrestling and a high school basketball game. And I tell you, it's just a lot of fun and a lot of good energy. And I learn something every time I go to a new sport because I don't really know how wrestling works. So so I got to learn and get some tips from that as well as rules that changed in basketball just like a year ago. So that's something new and different. And to just say again, like, kind of in my committee presentation, but that our our state ASBSD, they're really, really active, especially leadership. They went to that conference in in January, met with multiple senators, House Representatives, and then they'll be going to national. And they really do represent as well and really do advocate for us and and really take opportunities to get professional learning. They did tell me, interesting thing, I think that might be interesting to try that co op use, but they they went to a class where they took the board meeting recording and then had AI turn it into a podcast. And so it was presented to the public in like a much more a much more digestible amount. And it even can be done to where like the public can actually ask questions, which was really kind of mind blowing to me. So when we talk about like telling our story and things, you know, there's tools that aren't even necessarily that expensive that we I think could utilize and try out that they're talking about nationwide and in how to, you know, tell the story of public education. And so that was really interesting to learn.
After me and Katie leaves Mr. Sassy's office, you can be next, marching and and make your demands. All right, wonderful. Thank you for that update. And just I will be going to the National School Board Conference this year. And so hopefully I'll bring back some wonderful ideas and things that we can use. Mr. Swan?
Thank you, President Carr. Say, I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff at Rapid City Central. One of the things was that I went to the Hall of Fame induction for the for the Rapid City Central Cobblers this this past weekend. And I was really, it seemed like it was a reunion of sorts, but it also was got to introduce to some of our alumni that have really, really dedicated themselves to their communities and really have dedicated themselves to to making Rapid City better, Rapid City better, and representing Rapid City in the best ways. You know, the CEO of of Stanford Health, Stanford Health was there. Yeah, he was one of the inductees and it was just really a great ceremony. So hats off to Mr. Dolan and Mr. Bauer for for that great great afternoon of just getting to meet people. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other other? Okay, after, before we take the vote to enter executive session, again, I would just like to thank everybody for your flexibility for being able to be mobile in this, the change that we just made today. Those that are watching and will watch, thank you for taking your time. A bit of housekeeping, so and and information for the community, we will leave this Zoom link. And I believe Shirley sent us an executive session Zoom link. And so we'll get out of this, we'll try to find that one and get on another meeting. Anybody have questions about that procedure? Okay, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session SDCL one dash two five dash two point one, two point three and two point four.
It's on with.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Shirley, can we have a roll call, please?
Try.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we are now officially in executive session. We will not be taking any votes during that time. See you all in two minutes.